Good evening. I will now call this meeting to order at 6:30. The secretary will call the role of each board member to determine if a quorum is present.
Ms. Barth Fagan?
Present.
Mr. Gardner?
Present.
Mr. Groupie?
Here.
Mr. Kimpton?
Mrs. Moon?
Here.
Ms. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Schrader is here.
Thank you. You will rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For public and staff comments. Oh, first, I guess we, yes. Anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when the agenda item they want to address is being discussed. Before you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. And when you approach the podium, please provide your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the board, please leave those items with Mr. Satinon at the media table, and he will share those items with board members at the conclusion of the meeting. Remarks are limited to three minutes into one appearance. Questions directed to the board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. Sedalia School District Foundation?
Good evening. I just have two or three things here to share with you today. Last week, we took a photo op with Missouri State Fair Speedway Championship and M.C. Promotions, who donated $1,000 to the Eva Mothers Ball Scholarship, so thank you for that. We have Homecoming coming up in a couple weeks, Friday the 13th. And we are putting on one heck of a tailgate this year. We have purchased a tent. I apologize, Larry Rigdon. I've heard that he may or may have not had to unload that, and apparently it's right behind you, so go take a look at the tent. But it's a big deal. We made it a big deal, and we're excited that we're going to have a tent down by the actual stadium this year, and we're going to have a real old-fashioned tailgate like we did many years ago at Jenny Janes. We have eight reunions in town, Homecoming Weekend. We've got three this weekend, and then one the following weekend, but the majority will be Homecoming Weekend, so please, you know, look around for those alumni and welcome them, and if they ask for tours of the building, we'd appreciate it if you'd be gracious and make that happen. So we're looking forward to our weekend of events, the tailgate party, the pancake breakfast, end of events, the tailgate party, the pancake breakfast, tours of both buildings, and listening to our future alumni sing on Saturday morning.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Missouri National NEA?
Good evening. First, I wanted to welcome Ms. Barth Fagan to the board. It's your first time sitting up here. I'm excited to have you. That's why I reached out months ago to urge you, twist your arm a little bit to get you up here, so I'm excited to work with you. Other than that, personal or Sedalia NEA stuff, we held elections again. Nobody else signed up for any offices, so either we're doing a good job according to members, or they're just too busy to do that, which I'd understand on both. We've grown to about 95 members, so we're up another 12 from last year, so we're hoping to get to 100 before the end of the semester. We're pretty excited about that, but we think our spring drive, membership drive, is going to help quite a bit. Still growing. A lot of people have talked about that growth has mostly came from because we're truly focused on members' concerns, and I've been the first advocate to say, like, those concerns are being heard with this board, they're being heard with the central office, and you guys are truly making an effort to address them. So it's been a really good relationship back and forth. At this point right now, we're in the middle of polling, polling our members to see kind of our direction, what we want to focus on this year as we have talks with you guys. It's kind of, we have several different things, but a lot of the consensus comes back to salary and benefits, especially for our classified staff, making sure that that base for our classified staff, hourly wages, has risen to one that competes or is more than a lot of our local businesses that they're at. So once that finishes up, I sent it out one more time today. Once that finishes up this week, I'm planning on, like last year with Dr. Fraley and Ms. Nickel and Mr. Kimpton and any other board member, central office personnel, having that meeting that we had where we were very honest and upfront with each other, which I felt was really beneficial to getting you guys to understand where we're coming from, and you guys really listened, and I think it's been a good relationship so far. And so hopefully you guys are seeing that we're here to really make sure that the things that are bothering or issues with our staff, we're here to advocate for them. So other than that, just right now polling members and going to finish that up this week, and then, like I said, I'll reach out and try to find a time to meet again, hopefully this time not right before Thanksgiving break, because I know we all have plans. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. SCEA?
Hello, and good evening. SCEA is off to a great start this school year. Our membership is up with a total of 379 members so far, and we encourage anyone who has not yet joined to speak with their building representative, as there is still time to join and receive a discount card to local businesses. We're also very excited to have been able to add new businesses to our card this year and appreciate the business support. While SCEA is the local CTA for the Missouri State Teachers Association, our main focus is Sedalia, our educators, staff, and students here in our town. The more our staff, of our staff, that joins SCEA, the more we are able to give back in the way of scholarships to help staff continue their education, and the more scholarships we are able to give to graduating seniors of SCEA members. In addition, we also recognize educator and associate of the year at all buildings and honor all district retirees as they close this chapter and begin a new one. SCEA also provided the luncheon for the new Sedalia 200 staff in August during the new staff orientation. Something new that we're trying, the SCEA will be holding an open meeting here at the high school for our monthly meeting in October, and we encourage anyone who is already a member or is considering joining to attend. Additionally, October 4th, in October, four SCEA members will be attending the Central Regional Open Hearings at Best Western here in Sedalia, as well as having delegates attend the yearly regional conference in Columbia in November to vote on issues that MSTA will focus on in Jeff City this year with the legislature. We are really excited about this school year, and we want to thank each and every one of you for your continued support for the Sedalia 200 School District and SCEA.
Thank you. I will now ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And 4.9 Personnel Recommendations, Ashley Young with Ms. Moon abstaining. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And under decision, unfinished business, Dr. Fraley, the Missouri Valley College Agreement?
Point of order. Have we done payment of bills and, I'm sorry, personnel? That was the, that was...
That was all under consent agenda, 4.1 to 4.8. I included 4.8 because Mr. Kimpton's not here, abstaining from that one.
Because he's not here. Okay, all right.
We good? Go ahead, Dr. Fraley.
All right. Yeah, I brought this to the Board of Education last, at our last meeting in August, and simply a memorandum of understanding with Missouri Valley College that it's a non-exclusive agreement, which means we can share in some resources for dual-credit potential, graduate credit for our employees and et cetera. It opens the door for some discounts and scholarship opportunities through grow-your-own programs. Missouri Valley College had reached out to Sedalia 200 end of last year, wanting to try to partner up to do some, have some opportunities with each other.
There any questions for Dr. Fraley regarding this?
No, move its approval.
Okay, I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Junior High Robotics, Mr. Wright? Did you have anything you wanted? I know you presented last month. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Wright?
Oh, let's get her done.
So I will accept a motion to approve the Smith Cotton Junior High Robotics Team First Tech Challenge.
Want to make the motion?
And do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And policies and regulations, Ms., Dr. Fraley?
All right. These were presented last month's meeting. These were, came from MCE, which again writes policy for the Sedalia 200 School District. You have before you the recommendations of, all recommend, I am recommending that we, of course, approve all that are mandatory, because they're mandatory due to either a statutory requirement and/or from case law that have been presented to us. The ones, there's one that has to do with counseling services, 2810, adoption is recommended. There's, they're just taking the word guidance out of the language of the policy, so it'll just read counselor. It won't read guidance counselor anymore. I see nothing controversial in that. So to approve policy and regulations, 2115, 2200, 2240, 2400, 2525, 2760, 2810, 4120, 4866, 4867, 6121, 6251, are the ones that I am recommending. The one, optional one, is 6122, that would allow for basically a Hebrew Old Testament, New Testament class, that is not a mandatory one, that could end up playing itself out in the courts at some point in time because of the Establishment Clause of the Constitution. It's a very, it's something new that was passed through Missouri Legislature last year. I don't know if that'll hold up in court if someone opposes that at some point in time. So I don't know what the board's discretion will be with that, that particular policy.
I would make a motion to approve policies 2115 through 6251 only.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then under decision also is the, Ms. Brownfield for the migrant children review?
You should have before you the Title 1(c) program evaluation for our migrant students. This primarily supports our students that move consistently because of the different industry that their families work in. Agriculture is primarily a large one. We primarily use these funds to supplement them with tutoring needs and health needs, special services. We don't have a large number of migrant students, as you can see, and that even has decreased. We are hoping to work more closely with the DESI migrant recruiter to maybe help identify those students that we are not aware of, so.
Ms. Brownfield, I think it'd be important publicly to, because we had discussion earlier today in our other meeting, that what migrant is and it is not immigrant?
Correct, yes. Migrant is not immigrant, so these are students already in the United States that are, it's primarily just moving around. They're moving based on, like I said previously, the agricultural needs or the work needs of the family, so because of the nature of their jobs and their careers, they are moving based on the seasons very frequently. So we want to make sure that these students are being recognized and can get equitable education. Attendance is one of our main goals with them in graduation, so if we can focus on all the supplemental services to support them achieve that, that's kind of where we spend those funds.
I realize they move frequently, but where would I find out, for lack of a better term, their length of stay in the district?
We can run a report of those students. What happens is they are recognized at the state level, so once a student is deemed migrant, we have a separate database that we use at the state level, and so that, when a student moves from district to district because of the career or the job situation, that travels with them. So it's something that all districts tap into that database and then pull up, and then those records show how frequently they're moving. So we can absolutely run a report and include that moving forward.
I'd kind of be, I'd like, I'd like to know that.
Yep.
The other thing I'd like to know is, is I know it is difficult, what effort is, what do we do to coordinate with their previous district and with their next district? What do we do?
So we do reach out to, if the need arises, with their counseling and social worker teams, translators. Every district looks a little bit different on who runs the migrant program, so for us, that is primarily me, and then we facilitate that through our counselors and social workers as needed, and our translators are heavily involved as well. So when we do get that transfer student and we get that flag from that database system, we coordinate with those previous districts to just see what needs that they have already been, provided services for, what has worked well for the student, and then what we need to do moving forward to continue.
And you turn pass that on to the next district?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions from Ms. Brownfield? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And you have the next one, too, so.
I do. You should also have the Title III Language Instruction Program Evaluation in front of you, and this is our primary, our EL program, our students that are learning and acquiring English in our district. We have, our main goal with them is also we intendence and inquiring that English, but also ongoing professional development staff. These numbers continue to increase. If you notice, the 23% increase that is listed there on the front page, that is February to February. I will tell you that number of 506 from February 2023, we ended 2023 with 521. Currently, right now, as of today, we are at 557, so these numbers continue to exponentially increase. We have put some IAs in place to help support this. Mr. Curry and I are going to continue to look at positions that we potentially have in the books, that we can go ahead and take that SR III position that we have unfilled right now for EL and make that into a permanent position to help support the growing numbers. So our primary focus here, and just kind of to sum up, the EL program, attendance is becoming an issue with our EL students. Our translators are very important in this. They continue to help reach out to those families and make those phone calls and even home visits in some cases, so we're going to continue to focus on attendance. We did, however, exceed the state target, but did not meet our local goal with that. So we will continue our summer camp program. That was something that was new, is we started an EL summer program. The feedback from the teachers involved with that, that they would definitely like to see that come back and expand, so we're very hopeful to do that as well.
Can you, do you have a sense of whether the attendance figures have improved, you know, because this is whole school year out of date? Have they, I take it this is a statewide database, again, that you're tapping into?
This is, though, this is local attendance.
Okay.
Yes, this is local attendance.
Did it improve in '22, '23?
Yes, the numbers are improving a little bit, but you are not seeing a significant increase there. It's staying in that 75 to 80% range.
Any other questions from Ms. Brownfield? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Pyle?
Yes. Coming to the board tonight from the district, asking to seek permission from the Board of Education to approve the purchase of a new student passenger van. The van will be utilized for daily student transportation support and by our Athletics and Activities Department, and the size is more appropriate to use that van as compared to a bus. Some updates this year, as we know, first student has worked very hard to supply bus drivers and to keep routes running, and also support our extracurricular activities departments. Within that, though, we've utilized one of our student vans 28 times from the start of the school year to this week to try to help with the sporting events and things that we can help with when that size does work. And thinking about that, and just also just having one available if we have one breakdown that we use as a daily student transport van now, so it would be helpful if we could go on and pursue this purchase. My recommendation is to ask for the board to approve the van purchase not to exceed $55,000, for us to go out and look at bids and see what we can do.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle?
Do you have a size that you're looking for?
We would, yes, and that's another, appreciate you asking that. So we've told our board formerly that the, we have 10 passenger vans right now for student transport, but they've no longer make 10-passenger vans, so we're going to look out and see what we can do to come up with the largest possible. Dr. Fraley had talked to Ford, was the one that made the last 10-passenger van. They are working through a possibility of creating something from a factory that we may be able to utilize that is near a 10-passenger again, so the most recent purchase of the van that we purchased to help meet the need was an eight-passenger. So, but we would like to go on and get another 10 if that is available. So at the minimum, though, it would be an eight-passenger van.
Will the driver be required to have a CDL permit?
If it's not a daily-use van for, if it is a, if it is a daily student transport van, they do have to go through certain requirements to have a special licensure. If it is used by a coach to meet the need on an occasion that comes up, as long as they have insurance and their driver's license, they're okay to not have a specialized license.
To what extent would you be willing to look at at least a plug-in hybrid? We're not ready to go all-electric or anything like that, but a plug-in hybrid?
Yes, we would, we would talk to them about that in our local dealerships, and then it may extend from one of our local dealerships if they have a contact with Ford, again, that we could ask about that. Yes, sir.
We, I'm in conversation with Olathe Ford. Olathe Ford is one of the top two fleet dealerships in the United States of America, and they have more access to vehicles, where the two box trucks came from. Ms. Barth Fagan, to your, to add to your answer, it's statutory that anything more than 10 passengers, including the driver, has to be a yellow school bus, and that has been on the books for a long, long time. Now, in recent years, Ford Motor Company decided to quit manufacturing that, that product. People would want the 12, 15, 16-passenger vans, so it does put schools in quite a spot. Kansas is the same as Missouri when it comes to that. So looking at potentially if it can be, come out of the plant as a box van and then professionally installed seating, then we can maybe kind of tiptoe around that requirement and have a 10, because it's got to be manufactured for 10, like some folks were buying 15-passenger vans and removing one of the bent seats to make it 10, or whatever they needed to remove, and technically that didn't qualify either, you couldn't remove a seat. So it's just a very sticky statute that they, that's been on the books for a long time.
Any other questions for Mr. Pyle or Dr. Fraley? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the purchase of a new student passenger van as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the building upgrades with Hollison Miller, Mr. Pyle?
Yes. Bids were received on September 11, 2023, for building upgrades throughout the district. As we recall, the focus of those building upgrades is to provide more safety for our students and staff, as the buildings that need guided and security entries, and so we could work to make sure that those buildings have those completed. Other work includes renovations to the gym and the former pool area at Sedalia Middle School. A total of seven contractors submitted bids for this work. Hollison Miller provided the bid tabulation sheet, which was in our board packet for our reference, and it was attached. And as we think about this, this was some of the work that we brought to our Board of Education last year, and we declined the bids at that time. We didn't feel like they were competitive bids. So going on from there, our recommendation is to ask for board approval at this time to accept the base bid for the 2023-24 building upgrades in the amount of $4.65 million, and this project be awarded to professional contractors and engineers, PCE. PCE comes highly recommended with excellent reference checks from Hollison Miller, as they have worked with them through several projects, along with other area school districts and school districts around the Midwest, that they've completed work in with excellent reviews. Dr. Fraley also, we talked about this last week on some recommendation checks and things that we did, reference checks, and he also spoke to Septagon locally, and they've also spoke very highly of PCE.
Any questions for Mr. Pyle?
Move that we approve professional contractors and engineers bid for the 2023-24 building upgrades in the amount of $4,650,000 as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
I would say that this was really good news for the district, because originally it was estimated that these upgrades were going to cost potentially in excess of $8 million, so these came in very, very competitive.
Thank goodness, yes. And these items are up for discussion? Dr. Fraley, the MoCAT resolution?
Yeah, just bringing you documentation from MoCAT. MoCAT stands for Missouri Capital Asset Advantage Treasury Program. It is an investment company that does public investment for schools and municipal It is an investment company that does public investment for schools and municipalities under those, those regulations. This is a non-binding resolution. It just simply opens the door, or bring this back for decision next month. It opens the door to share financial information with MoCat from the district and for them to consult with potential short and long-term investment opportunities that may be to our advantage.
This is, this is basically a, a school started competitor to MOSIP?
It is a competitor to MOSIP, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Fraley? And you'll bring this back next?
That's correct.
Okay. The website designs and branding. Is Ms. Hartman here?
Yes, I've invited Megan Hartman of Callison Associates to present to the board a little information about some possible strategies for our, our website. Blackboard has been taken over by Finalsite, so there'll be a website redesign in our near future. And I asked Callison Associates to propose some ideas of the best way to transition with that and, and other potential branding opportunities for the Sedalia Two Hundred School District.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to all of you. So Dr. Fraley asked us to come and just discuss opportunities for us to partner with the district to help improve the new website. There's, with the transition from Blackboard to Frontsite, there's an opportunity to really look at all of the content that's on the website now, take a step back and look at how the current students, potential students, families, stakeholders use the website. So not just taking what you have and pushing it over to the new platform, but doing the research and discussion with stakeholders within the school district and also those that are going to be using the website. So think about it as putting in the foundation. Or really, when you're building a home, you need the, you need the blueprints. So putting the site plan, putting the research in to figure out how your users are going to find the content, what's easiest, what needs to be there, what maybe doesn't. The content's been moved over from site to site, so taking a step back and looking at what is relevant, what will help with search engine performance. So when potential new students are looking for, their families are looking for the school district, making sure that you're popping up. So we can work with the platform and the district to help put together a plan. And we can be as involved as is decided. After we put the plan together, we can help develop content, we can help migrate, we can help ongoing management of the website, or we can take it and turn it over, and Bob and his team can go from there. So it really just depends on what capacity there is. Part of that is also taking a look at the brand and making sure everything's consistent. So you think about what is the Sedalia Two Hundred brand? There are many different schools in the district with different logos and variations, keeping everything consistent and unified so that when somebody outside of Sedalia sees any of our schools, they automatically associate it with Sedalia Two Hundred. There's so many amazing things going on in this district that sharing that story and getting people excited about coming to live here, send your, send our children here is what the whole point of the branding process is. So the website discovery and the user experience is one side, and then also taking a look at the brand, the brand itself and making recommendations on how to consistently use it and what improvements could potentially be made.
Any questions?
What, what districts have you done this for already?
We have not done branding for districts, but we've done branding since we started in eighty-seven.
I'm, I'm looking at the website development.
Yeah.
What have you, what have you, what other districts have you done this for?
We have not built a district website, but we have built many other websites ranging from a hospital to the city of Sedalia, much smaller websites and much more fully integrated websites. We won't be building this because the flat, the platform is already built and it's templated. We'll be supporting the build, so it won't be from scratch.
Any other questions?
I'll, I'll say that the website redesign, rebuild could be quite an extensive project for, for the district. And when we have a, another presentation coming up a little later on with our activities complex and before we get too far along with those projects, and we want to make sure we've examined all our opportunities to potentially, if there needs to be any changes made to either logo or how we want to sell ourselves, now would be the time.
I agree a hundred percent, Dr. Fraley. It'll save a lot of money to be able to do it now. You don't want to rush it, you want to put the thought behind any kind of change like this, but now's the perfect time to do it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Fraley revising our meeting schedule?
Yes, indeed. I'll take full blame for this because I think I did it. And as a matter of fact, there's no thinking I did. Hindsight twenty-twenty, when we set this year's board, board meetings up, our January meeting, because we moved their December meeting up to the eleventh to get rid of or, you know, not to conflict with all the Christmas programs and et cetera that go on. So from December eleventh right now, all the way to January twenty-ninth, we don't meet. And then we meet again the second because there's two meetings scheduled in February. So this just evens that gap out a little bit by moving the January meeting up to the twenty-second of January instead of the twenty-ninth.
Okay, and we'll make that vote next month on that? Anybody have any questions on that or concerns?
No.
And now the Jenny Jane's Activity Complex, and I think we're taking a seat in the audience for this?
That is correct.
Okay, as you guys are coming down, I just really want to introduce Vernon Jones's team. Tonight, we've been working with a few guys here. Jay Garner, he, he works with us, works with us almost on a day-to-day basis, and Matt Hicks the same way. And Jameson Shealy, he's the general manager for Vernon Jones. I think he's going to be the one presenting tonight. So they're going to present to you guys, and then please, if you have any questions, don't be afraid to ask.
Yes, so thank you for your time, I'm Matt Hicks, and thank Kyle, thanks for the intro. We were called, I believe, the day after your, your last board meeting, and Kyle came to us and essentially said, hey, we've got big plans, and we want somebody to really put some time and energy into this and come up with, with maybe the best activity or athletics campus in, in the whole state. So, so the first thing we did was we had, we, right away, we got our teams together. You know, we knew we had a short timeline, they wanted to meet again in two weeks after our first meeting. So we, we got our, our, first thing we did was we had our, we had their layout, their, their ideas a whole, so we started, okay, let's just dive in and see what we can put together. So our three D rendering team, our visual graphics team, put these together. Since then, since this meeting, you can scroll through a few of those, Jay. But since this meeting, things have changed a little bit. But we wanted to go ahead and show this to you tonight just because, to, to show you what, what kind of things that our, our team can do. So, and honestly, we, we rarely do these for, for free or for just anyone, but, but with this type of project, we wanted to, to really show you guys that we, what we're all about and what we can do and, and really put our best foot forward. So here's just a few of these things, three D renderings. So you can go ahead and scroll down, Jay. Let me back, I'll, I'll back up just one second. So Vernon Jones, we were, we've been around since nineteen seventy-six, started as asphalt paving company out of St. Louis. Shortly after us starting, we got into, we became the biggest asphalt paper, or one of the biggest commercial asphalt papers in St. Louis, and we still are today. In the eighties, we started doing paving running tracks. You know, the chat running tracks started to go into asphalt, so naturally we started paving those. In the early nineties, these running tracks went into polyurethane and rubber, and we were subbing that out at the time to a company out of Texas or one out of Oregon. So what we decided to do was we brought that in-house. So we've been, since the early nineties, we've been doing polyurethane running tracks so we could build your track from the, from the ground up. In two thousand three, two thousand four, Wash U came to us, Washington University in St. Louis. They're still one of our best customers. We built a couple of fields for them in the last year. So yeah, we, they came to us and they said, hey, can you build us a synthetic turf field? So that was our first in two thousand four. And since then, our, our sports division has grown into our largest division. The last couple of years, we've, we've been right at or around sixty fields that we've built. A lot of baseball, and now baseball's coming online, as, as all you guys have seen. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at. And we're, so we're one of the largest sports builders in the Midwest, and we travel about a five-hour radius around St. Louis. So believe it or not, this drive is nothing for us. I mean, we're, part of the gig is we're professional drivers, we drive a lot. But, so, yeah, we can drive the bus or the, or the van maybe.
I actually think we have the licenses for that.
But, so the other thing we did was we came out here with our drone, our LiDAR drone, and got a tow pole of the entire site before we started pricing this. Well, actually, we're kind of doing alongside, but that helped us get more information so we could be more accurate with what we're doing. So you want to scroll through some of those, Jay? So yeah, this is, here, go, go, but, well, yeah, that's fine. Here, go back up. Go back up. Yeah, just hover over that. We put the old guy on the computer. Yeah, just scroll, now your arrows down here, just scroll through a few of those. So you can see here that we, we've gotten all the contours around the whole property with that LiDAR drone, and we went ahead and basically put a darn near full set of plans together. Again, this is the original version, which we've, we've tweaked some things since after meeting with, with Kyle and the rest of the team. So keep, there you go, there's, so basically a full set of plans that we could, we could start building today, really, if we wanted to. Again, this is not something we regularly do, we just wanted to, to really dive into this thing because we're excited about it. So go ahead and scroll down. And so yeah, so this was our first version of the, of the renderings that we were looking at. And then after meeting with the team, they wanted to move, flip the soccer field, move the tennis courts, widen the multipurpose field that you see behind the, behind the building, and which, which my understanding will be used for a multitude of things, including the van, which I know we can hear them kind of back there, and I know that's a big deal here, so we, so that'd be, I mean, it would be quite the feature. So our second grading plan, what we did here is we, we started to, they said, okay, let's move the tennis courts. You can see that the, you've got soccer now has flipped to north and south so that one goalie's not getting sun in his eyes. We have an option there for tennis courts, you can see it here too. The tennis court up here to the right of the soccer or perhaps down here too. So we were looking at, at these different layouts or where we could put these things. And the, and the baseball, softball, you actually have a geothermal well inside that rectangle, so that's why we stayed away from all that. And then in the back, you see, we, they, they wanted to look at a larger multipurpose field. So on this, on this field, it's, you can fit two football fields, a full soccer field as wide as you want it to be. You could, you could get two vans there on there if you really wanted to, so. It's just a, kind of a close, a close-up view of these items. And then this, so, and replacing the, the, the game field there is, we engaged Shaw Sportster for just a lot of, or they, they do this, it's called a game on field. It's a new way to manufacture these fields. It's allowed them to, to make these just really elaborate designs that would be, and you'd be the first one in Missouri to have it. Well, Wash U has one, their baseball field has one, so you'd be the first high school. We took a crack at throwing some logos on here for you too, so you could see those. And I believe all of this is, is uploaded to the agenda where you could click the link and, and spend as much time as you want checking these out. The schedule, so the schedule's the last thing that we, that we have on here. It's kind of small right here, but you can, you might be able to zoom in. But essentially, we, we know that the baseball field is the, is the number one priority. So what we did was, we, on this schedule, you'll see, if we start November first, we're looking at a, at the field being done around March eleventh. But there are some long lead items. There's the press box is a long lead item, lights are a long lead item, and the turf too. We need, we would need to get that into manufacturing, get things ordered really quickly. So it's a big ask to get done with that baseball field in April. Can we do it? Yes. Do we need to make some decisions fairly quickly? Yes. So that is, yeah, like I said, we could spend as much time as you, as you'd like looking at this site. We, we put it all together for you so you could have it in one spot and access it whenever you want. What else? What do you get?
One thing that Matt kind of glossed over on that, we literally showed kind of all the iterations we went through. We're more than willing to continue that as many times to get this right for the school as, as we need to. All cards on the table, I'm kind of extra, extra motivated for this job. My nephew will play here in week one next year. At least I'm assuming, because the last two week ones, they played here, and vice versa, you guys played there this year. So you play them in all sports, so I'm, I'm invested. I don't, I don't normally go to board meetings anymore. So this is us saying we want to earn your business as a group. Usually we send one person or two, we don't normally send three. We're, we're extremely invested, we want to do the right thing for the district, do the right thing for your kids, and do the right thing for every one of you that are making these decisions. We have a whole lot of information that just got dumped on you guys. We tried to break it down as best we could without confusing it on the cost for the different items. And if you want to take one out or change one, it's, it's, it's not, it's something we can do in less than probably twenty-four hours. We have a, a full team in the office that you don't see. We have five full-time civil engineers. We have two, I'm going to call them their interior designers that we repurposed for these three D drawings. We have eight project managers, fourteen foremen for crews. And one thing that Matt didn't tell us or tell you guys was, I think we're the fourth or fifth largest in the country at building these. So we, we want to earn your business, and we believe we're the right partner for you in a, in a complex like this.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
I'm very curious about the layout. I got a lot of those, we're good, we're good. Thank you, though. I'm very curious about the layout, okay? In your opinion, does the tennis make more sense in the top right corner or the bottom spot that you have? I assume you assess our land as you should. Where do you see tennis fit in best?
Economically or usability?
Both.
Usability, bottom left. Economically, top right. That's why we showed it in those spots.
I assume because the
The both.
Layout of the level of land now.
Yeah, the both.
So more, more excavating in the bottom left than the upper right?
Correct. And it's more of what we have to do with our drainage systems for the other fields. Because right now, they can all drain under, I'm going to call it the second court from the top right.
Yeah.
Basically, we can drain all of our stuff through there and, and make it right by the city's ordinances. If we put those there, I have to figure out how to pipe everything different size to different locations. I mean, it's nothing we haven't done, but it just, it's going to cost a little bit more.
From a sun, I hold on. From a sun, my sun, playing standpoint, you know, big peaks for baseball.
Yes.
Is that better than the upper right or?
They're both directly north and south, which is, which is ideal.
For tennis, it's, yeah, so if, if it were, if we were just doing it off the space, we'd actually turn it probably in line with the geothermal field.
That's what I was curious.
Uh, but tennis is supposed to be true north and south at all times. That's why they're orientated in those two directions. Uh, if, if you guys want to waive that, I mean, we'll build it however you want. But that, that, we were taking a shot at it, just trying to make sure everything was, so like baseball's in the right direction, softball's in the right direction, to a T of what they're supposed to be. Now, so is soccer in this? And these guys caught the soccer. We, we were just trying to make sure it all worked. With property lines and things, Mr. Curry.
So with the expansion that we've talked about, the road coming in, does this take that into account?
Yes.
Soccer field up there?
Yes. Yeah, and baseball and softball are southwest to northeast, which is also by the book.
So you have a timeframe that you were talking about possibly being able to have baseball ready in April. What is the, what is your timeframe for it to be completion as with everything here?
With everything there, I believe it was in the middle of June. I believe everything right now is in the middle of June. With everything, if you did all.
Twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
We asked for baseball first because of the conflicts we have currently with the field we use. We.
Is this involved in the rest of the next school year stuff?
Correct. Right. Yeah, and we do, we do show on the schedule, uh, doing the football, I believe, in January into February, but I, I think we don't want to do that, if I'm not mistaken. So that, which is fine, that's a, that can be, that's the, actually the shortest duration, replacing that so we can plug that into the summer.
But the longest lead item of all the turf.
Or removal replacement.
But that is the longest lead item for the turf. If you had to pick one, that's the longest one it'll take to get ordered. There's only one of those machines in the country. Yes, sir.
What actually can be done? I apologize, I thought the well field was more south and perhaps west of where the, I think the tennis courts are on well, well fields. Where is it?
It, it, that, that kind of where you got the hammer.
Yeah, they, they sent us the PDF of where that location was, so we, we determined we shouldn't touch any of that space.
Is there anything that can be built there? I mean, I know other people that put, uh, parking lots.
Yeah, you, you can build it over the well field and certainly it is, it, in my opinion, if, if you could do without, it'd be the best case scenario without one on top of it. Uh, tennis courts, I would think, might be the easiest, rather than putting a plump on a stadium on top of it. Tennis court would be something to be, be redone if needed down the road.
If they're asphalt. With post-tension, you don't want to go and cut into post-tension courts because the, the cables might snap and it might actually really hurt somebody.
Oh, you're kidding? I'm sorry, you said concrete?
Yeah, so the, we, we, we led with post-tension tennis courts on this. It's basically a thirty-year base, so that you shouldn't see cracking in it for.
Have you assessed the carpet that's on the football field?
Yeah, we did. We, we took a look at it and walked it with Kyle, and, and it's, it's, uh, for as old as it, as it is, it's what, twelve, thirteen years old? That, that not accurate? Ten? Uh, I mean, still, I mean, so we tell people to plan for ten years almost across the board. So these, they're under warranty for eight years, almost every turf product, uh, yeah, out there. And so we tell people to plan for ten years. But yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's coming to the end of the road. It's, uh, uh, and some of that's all in the eye of the beholder. Could you try to squeeze a couple more years out of it? Maybe, but, uh, but when I go walk on it, I, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I'd say it's pretty much at the end of its life.
You're two years beyond your warranty, probably have an eight-year warranty on it. The one good thing about that is, is when you pa- when you package things like this, it just becomes cheaper. I mean, um, basically turf is a widget, so how many widgets can I run through the factory? That's the way they look at it. So when you buy that many square foot, they start discounting things in a package deal, which we took into account in our pricing to you guys.
And Mr. Curry, that, this year, including, uh, this company, that's three different companies that have assessed that project. All the same.
Yeah, I realize time flies, I just didn't think it was that old. Be honest with you, it always like so great, but time flies.
If I remember right, it's one of the few fields I've ever seen go flying. Yeah. During the install. That freak storm that hit. I'm just around for that.
Any other questions?
So. Correct. Yeah, on the agenda, there's a, just a link, I believe I clicked on it earlier, so it takes you straight to here. But, uh, and we do have, uh, pricing for you, hard copies of it for each of you. So it's, uh, all in, I mean, I can tell you, it's, uh.
What was it? Eleven point nine, some change.
Yeah, eleven point nine and some change, right. And then, and then we also recommend, uh, there's about a five or a half million dollar allowance that we always, uh, it's a contingency for sto- soil stabilization, which we believe you're probably going to need some of that, if not all that. And we don't want, we don't want to surprise you with that later, so we, we go ahead and, and that's shown on the proposal here too, so. That's for, that's for what you see right here.
That's for everything that's turf except.
And light, and lights on all of them. So all of those, all of that's included. Press boxes, bleachers. So all that spelled out in detail in this proposal, and then we broke it down by major item. On the, on the last page, we've broken it down by, you know, baseball field, softball field, uh, some different things, so we're, um.
How long do we have if we push back the signing date? My, my worry is getting it done by the time you guys want to get it done. The longer we wait, the more it's going to cost to, to build it through the winter and/or, uh, we don't know what turf's going to do next year. Uh, we buy enough product from Shaw and from some others that they, as soon as we say it's a job, they honor the pricing. Um, so we don't have that inflationary up and down, uh, and we buy a lot in bulk, so they don't, they don't do that to us. Luckily, we've been pretty fortunate with the last couple of years, uh, where others haven't.
What structures are going to be built around the fields, the, the, the baseball and softball fields? And then that large purple thing up there, is, is that additional stands?
It's just a hatch.
So each baseball and softball field, each has a, has a backstop, figured block backstop, netting on top of it, um, like a professional style. So one of our kind of standards is we try and elevate that area behind the backstop. I don't know how many of you have been to a baseball or softball game or a soccer game where you're staring at the, uh, the top rail of the fence. We don't like that, because we've had to do that ourselves. So we try and make this like a little bit more of a stadium vibe or a stadium feel. That way it also, it, it elevates, uh, fans above the dugouts. So we have block dugouts included, um, and then behind home play, we have, uh, I believe it's two seventy-person bleachers for both baseball and softball. Um, has new scoreboards, they're basic, they're nine-inning scoreboards. It's not a video board, we didn't go all out, but we, we thought that that was something that you would want.
The other purple box is a, like a changing locker room that'll be built over there beside the current concession stand.
And then the, the sliver there between the existing sidewalk and the soccer field is a, a concrete slab. They're going to put a five-hundred-person bleacher on, you can always back that down, but that would make that a soccer stadium field. And again, each of these fields, the tennis courts, all had lights. The tennis courts, I believe, had one shade structure and one small bleacher in the middle, so that visiting teams and home teams can put their bags and things on there and sit in the shade.
Are there degrees of carpet?
Yes, significant difference.
So on a scale of one to ten, what you're proposing?
Which field?
Soccer and football.
So they're, they're different. Um, the soccer itself, what I would do is a very high-end, uh, monofilament field. It's going to mimic like real natural grass, um, as best as possible without having to have the entire maintenance of a really high-end natural grass. I would say on a one-to-ten scale, like you just said, it's probably like an eight and a half. Um, I didn't want to go, you know, FIFA, but I also didn't want to go Pinto. Um, the football field itself, that's a whole different animal. To be able to do the watermarked Tiger logo and all that, um, that's only one company with one product, that's their highest end. If you want. If you want to back that down, we can. Um, in relative terms, that's about a seventy-five thousand dollar item.
And then the baseball softball, is it different?
Yeah, so, um, the baseball softball fields are the turf that the World Series is playing on in twenty twenty. They still have a level above that in baseball, but nobody wants to buy it. And I didn't really want to say you have to go with organic infill and water it. I mean, I don't want you having to water synthetic turf. Some people get a little antsy with that. Um, but I would call them on the high end of better. I wouldn't call them best, but I wouldn't call them.
And all of those kind of make your guarantee projected around ten years?
Yes. Yeah, and, uh, the blades are way better than they were when they went in. Like, we have a lot of Shaw fields the same age as the fields you have here. We didn't build your original field, the football field, but we were building fields at the time. The blades, the technology in them, uh, has evolved. Uh, I'm not going to tell you the last twelve years, but I think it's ten to twenty percent better than it used to be.
And, and amount of play, maintenance, all those things come, are factors in that, you know, you got to make sure you're doing the right thing, so.
And then the practice fields I assume are of the once degree or?
Yeah, I would, I would change that to more of a, uh, a Ford pickup truck or GMC pickup truck and say you can beat the crap out of them.
Yeah, with those, it's, it's.
That's the intention.
We were with a, uh, a slip film product, so it's, it's, which is built to just take a beating, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the post-tension tennis courts is the, the high-end strongest. Uh, it'll, it, it was probably a hundred grand more than an asphalt court setup, but you shouldn't have any issues with the subbase for the next thirty years. That's the whole intention of post-tension. And those have been around since the seventies, so that's not going out on a limb and saying that.
Anything else?
I will, I will say, so, um, you know, in a perfect world, you guys would say, hey, yeah, here's a contract, go, right? But, uh, we know that that's probably, you know, not, not on the, on the agenda this evening, but, uh, there are some other things we, like, we could, we could operate off of a letter of intent, uh, which we could present to Dr. Fraley and his team, and, and, uh, that would allow us to get some of these long lead items going if, eh, you know, before you're, we, before you release us completely to, to move and build the project, so.
In the sense urgency is truly trying to hit that date and let some of the seniors play on one of the fields, right? That's, that's our intention. Like, if, if you guys waive that, then we have a little bit of time. But putting the plans together, making sure we're doing the right things by the city, that's something we want, we want to do it the right way. Thank you guys.
Those are cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fraley.
Thank you.
Sir? Do we just motion it right now?
Okay, next on the agenda, I'll wait for Mr. Pyle. Okay. Um, rental schedule for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, Mr. Curry and Mr. Pyle?
Yes, um, just bringing this back, we discussed this last month. We decided after having some conversation in our office as well to bring it back as another discussion item, especially as we look at what we just saw and what we talked about last month, about the potential addition of, uh, other facilities on our campuses. Um, this is something that is not as pressing and don't necessarily need to have a change immediately this school year. So we brought this back again for discussion, uh, this month, and certainly if, if you haven't had a chance to read the little update that I put at the front of the memo, um, just about getting some feedback from the board, and you can certainly email me that information if you'd like, or we can have some discussion this evening about, uh, if you feel that it is appropriate, uh, these changes, if it's not too drastic, or if we should maybe phase it in at a, a, a smaller increment next school year and then, uh, but again, as I indicated last month, this really had not been addressed in probably ten or twelve years as far as these facility rental agreements and the costs. So finding that fair market value that we price, you know, our facilities at, is something that, you know, we're not rushing to do and we'll, we'll wait to implement at the beginning of next school year. So we'll, we'll bring this back for a decision, you know, before the end of the year, before we get to July one. Uh, but certainly if there's any feedback that anybody wants to share now, or you can certainly provide that to me moving forward as well.
My only comment was going to be that, you know, if we made a decision by the end of this year, this calendar year, then to me, um, I would think it would be best just to implement it all rather than phase it in, because if we announce it in December, early January, then that kind of prepares, I guess, organizations or businesses that might use our campuses. That's going to give them advanced notice, I feel, before August of twenty-four. So that was my only thought on it.
Yeah, that's some of the conversation we had as well, is we didn't want to have to worry about grandfathering those people in that had already, you know, signed up for a, a facility and a location, and then having to change it after we had a board meeting, you know, this month. So we decided best to just wait and have it approved for the beginning of next school year, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, and LJ Hart and Company, Dr. Fraley?
Well, uh, the board has approved approximately four point five million dollars worth of improvements that will take place this next year. You just heard a presentation for an eleven point nine million dollar, uh, facilities upgrade out here with our activities. So the big question is, how do you pay for all that? I, I had LJ Hart run through a couple of scenarios I've discussed before that I have, uh, been trying to build up our capital projects reserve balances in twofold. Uh, one, uh, been doing that over a period of time, uh, not knowing if and when the taxpayers of Sadea would take the sunset off the, uh, temporary operating levy that built this facility. Uh, so I knew that we had to build up those capital. rating fell first, and then we would, at that point in time, they would be able to issue the certificates at approved rate. So she, Courtney Wegman, from LJ Hart, had given a couple, three different scenarios, one with a $5 million financing, one with a 10, and one with a 15. You have that sheet in front of you. I just wanted to give the board some information that along those lines and that I would be recommending if we move forward with these projects to go ahead and do lease certificates of participation to raise funding based on our levy past 2020-27.
If we were to make a decision on, on this, let's say we, at the next meeting, we vote to go with, with the revisions to the Jenny Jane's Activities Complex, what kind of lead timer are we needing for the financing?
Well, like I said, four to, four to six weeks. We, we have enough working capital, of course, to get us started and then some, essentially already, you know, in the bank in our reserve balances for these capital projects. So we could delay that. We discussed a lot of where the current interest rates are, where they're going. The Fed did meet again recently and decided not to increase the prime rate the last time. And there are, the speculation is that potentially, as they've gotten inflation somewhat under control, I think the target is to have CPI in the low 2% is what the Federal Reserve is trying to accomplish. Right now, interest rates on these lease, lease certificates of participation are not as, as attractive as they once were, but are still, in historical perspective, very, very low. It wasn't like the 2% to 3% range that we were able to do on the loftus early childhood center. Those, those rates no longer exist. Not quite that good. But they're still relatively low. There is speculation that the rates could move down a little bit incrementally, slowly, over time. So by pushing off the financing piece of that, maybe until as the middle choice of June 2024, that, that may be a decent timing option, because the rates might shake themselves out a little bit. We'll have a clearer picture.
The other, the other thing, though, is that, you know, after 2007, I'm trying to think, we probably did that in 2007 or 2008, rates were fairly high then, and we just surfed those all the way into the basement. And there's, if, if we're dealing with high rates now, there's a good possibility we could do that again.
Yes, that is correct. And what these lease certificates of participation, there can be a five, five-year call on those. At the end of five years, if the rates are advantageous, then we could do those refinancings like we had previously.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
How much did we have set aside in that capital improvements category?
We ended the year, I don't have that exact number in front of me. We ended last fiscal year with a little over $17 million in that, in that fund. Now, of course, you have to remember that our current leased participation certificates, in other words, our mortgages, we have three outstanding. They, with principal and interest, we pay approximately $3.5 million a year on those. That is budgeted into the 70 cents from our operating levy that is placed into the capital projects fund, covers those payments. And of course, those go away in 2027, which opens up the door from that point forward without necessarily taking, doing anything different than what we've been doing. So not necessarily anything extra.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other question I have is, is if we go through with this, you know, doing essentially the projects that we've just awarded bids for and the athletic, and the Activities Complex, after that, we still have plenty of working capital or, or borrowed capital that we can work on the true issues of what to do with the middle school, rehabbing our elementary schools, so that they're, so that basically you've got a, you know, classroom in one building is not necessarily better than in any other building.
You, according to, if you recall, last year, we went through some of these funding scenarios and based on Hollis's Long Range Plan and identified projects. If, for example, using round numbers, if we were to do a $15 million financing for these projects and that we would still have a little bit in excess of 25 million that could still be potentially raised through lease, lease certificates, that does not include the, it's down a little bit right now to a little over 16 million that we still have. We've paid, we've made some major innovations over the summer that have cut into that, but we'll be replenishing it as we get local and state monies.
Wonderful.
So if you were to, you know, you're looking at another approximately $40 million that could be spent.
We've got plenty to do, the fundamental work in the elementary schools and, and the, and the middle school.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other comments, questions?
I know the secured entrances is a big issue, and I'm, I'm pleased that we were able to take care of that tonight. So get that all out, completed, done, and then we have the funds to consider things like this, I think is wonderful. Wish we could have done it 10 years ago.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to information. The attendance reports, Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, let me grab that real quick. Okay, just as a reminder, these are two different reports. We have 8.1 and 8.2. The first is the 90-90 report, and so the public knows that is, the goal from the state is that you have 90% of your students that have at least 90% attendance. So that rating is where we receive our points on our annual performance report, which is the APR. However, the ADA, which is 8.2, is the percent of average daily attendance. They are two different mathematical calculations. So the 90-90 report district-wide is 86.2. So that means 86.2% of our students have 90% attendance or greater. As you'll see, Horace Mann currently as a school building leads the way with 92.14 of their students having a 90% or better attendance. So we have some kids on the bubble. We're really close to 90 in, in a lot of those schools, and we want to try to target those particular students and see what we can do, you know, to bring that attendance up for those folks. That, again, is where the APR points come from, from the state report. The ADA report, our current ADA is 96.8%. The highest being at 98.09, barely above the junior high, is Skyline Elementary. And overall, again, 96.80. ADA, that percentage is how you get paid in your state formula money. So our overall current ADA is 4,753 and 91.91. I don't know that we can expect to finish the year that high, but I'm sure crossing my fingers and tips.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley on the attendance report? Okay, we'll move on to Mr. Pyle with the special education compliance review, which is very impressive.
Yeah, we're thankful to celebrate a little bit. Sedalia School District Number 200 Team, our administration team that's here with us tonight, and our, our principal crew all the way down from our special education coordinators, would just like to take a moment with our Board of Education, celebrate our recent findings from our special ed compliance report. Every three years, DESI requires that special education programs send in samples of your work from evaluations to IEPs, individualized education plans. And the larger the district, the larger sample that you have to provide. So RR PDC Representative Julie Harris spoke just how thankful she was for Sedalia. She was very happy for us as well. She said for us to be able to do this is just very, she was very proud and thankful for our team as well, and, and this is our second year doing this throughout these cycles. So I just wanted to bring this to our board and say how thankful we are for our team. Our leadership team has, has guided some teachers that are brand new to special education throughout this process, too. We've even had to coax some of them to become special ed teachers because of the need, and they've, they've jumped on board, been willing, and meeting the needs of our students with also a very high-demanding job paperwork-wise. So just very thankful for them, wanted to say thanks and, and celebrate.
Yes, definitely. Very impressive and very appreciative. Thank you.
Mr. Pyle, can you, about roughly what percent of our population is special needs?
At this time, we're at 14.2%, so out of our entire district.
And Ms. Brownfield, I'd like to make mention, Ms. Brownfield mentioned her numbers earlier with EL population. And rough numbers, that's about 11 or 12% of our total population that have those, those special needs as well as, as an English language learner. So my point being is, we have about a quarter, a fourth of our student population that, that need extra help to be successful. And it's quite challenging, because they're, they are already, you know, at a disadvantage by just their, their circumstance in that regard. So it is commendable to our, our staff and admin and, and et cetera that, that work very, very hard, and I just wanted to mention that.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm looking at these, at, at the review and things like that, and I know that this is just the tip of the iceberg as far as the paper and everything. This freaking thing looks more complicated than most tax forms that I work with. Is there any way that we can continue to cut down on the amount of documentation that these, that, that our special ed population is, you know, that our special ed teachers are working on so that they can spend more time with their students?
Right. Our special education coordinators lead, try to help lead that process as much as they can from their office to help support the paperwork that our special ed teachers have to provide. But those, those expectations come from the federal guidance, then on down to our state. So they, they've talked for years that some of these standards would be paper-reducing acts. They've even talked about, but it has not been to that point yet. So we try to look at a district to provide support. The Board of Education was very good to provide some ESER positions that helped us when we had those opportunities. We've got a, a support special education coordinator as an ESER position that's split between the high school and junior high. And it may be that we look to, when that money runs out, that we may have to talk as a team to, to continue with that. But as far as immediate plans that we're hearing from the higher powers, there's no reduction. So we've just got to continue to try to meet the needs while serving our students and support our teachers, of course, which we do.
At, at the risk of increasing that burden on special ed people, do, does economic development in this town ever get this information?
They may not be aware of our exact percentages, Mr. Gardner. I, I know that Pettis County and, and our crew is very supportive, and, and so they're, they're, they might be aware to a certain level, but I'm not sure if they know the actual percentages or where we're at.
One of, one of the things of this town is that we have, we have, we have a higher popul, you know, percentage population of people with needs like this. But that's also, the flip side of that is that we are a beacon in the darkness for a lot of people. They can have good jobs, and their kids and their developmental disabilities are going to be well taken care of in this district. And I would appreciate it if we could get that news out for people.
Yes. We work to do that through community meetings and different things that we're part of, and, and we'll continue to do that. And I, and your point is, is right on, because we are the largest district in our area, so we will, many families find the way to get here if they have a student with high needs. So we, we work to, to meet those needs.
Thank you.
Okay, and the next item is the MSVA Fall Regional Meeting, which is tomorrow evening in Concordia. And before we leave tonight, we'll share the plans to carpool and where to meet tomorrow evening. Board refresher training for Mayor, Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, this is just a, a video training I had pushed out to all the board members, and it was required that each of you sign off that you viewed that in order for us to maintain our membership with the mayor organization, which is the Missouri Association for Rural Educators.
Okay. And so do we need to sign this with Lisa or before we leave tonight?
Yes.
Okay. I will then, with that completing our agenda, go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn to closed executive session.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Education of the Sedalia School District Number 200, having duly voted to close its meeting, as authorized by Section 610.021, RSMO subsection 1, legal actions, 3, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting, 13 personnel records, 14 records which are protected, 18 public safety or law enforcement, and 19 security system and structural plans. By law of the Missouri statutes, will conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on September 25, 2023 at Smith Cotton High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Ms. Barthbaken?
Here.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Mr. Kimpton?
Mrs. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader, both aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great week.